Testing one two, one two three. Good. Okay.
How you all doing?
Good, how are you?
You? If the little guys are talking, just tell them to talk normal. I'll turn them like, turn them down.
Alright.
They don't have to, they don't have to use their voice.
Okay, okay, thank you. You just said we need, you might need to take your voice off and then you need to tell me. Yeah.
No, I can turn it down.
You shut me off.
It's just, wait, yeah, I can. From the...
A call to order this meeting of the Coweta County Board of Education Agenda 764, March 8, 2022, 6:30 PM. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Recognitions, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'll call on Public Information Officer, Mr. Dean Jackson to bring you recognitions. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. We have two sets of recognitions tonight, and our first involves Ruth Hill Elementary School. Mary Thompson, Ruth Hill gifted teacher, has been named as the Gifted Program Teacher of the Year for the State of Georgia by the Georgia Association for Gifted Children. Ms. Thompson is here with us tonight, and I'd like to call her forward with her principal, Dr. Erin Corley, who will introduce her for tonight's recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Ruth Hill Gifted Teacher and Georgia Association of Gifted Children's 2022 Gifted Program Teacher of the Year, Ms. Mary Thompson. Ms. Thompson's classroom is much like hers, full of creativity, energy, and passion. She creates an atmosphere of excitement for learning as she helps students develop critical and creative thinking skills with real-world applications so that we can see students can see meaning and purpose in what they do. Her tireless dedication is also extended to serving others. She somehow juggles sponsoring both our Beta Club and our K Kids Club, which both focus on building tomorrow's leaders and teaching them that true leadership is about serving others. She has organized activities that benefit our community, including raising money for the Humane Society, the First Foundation, the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and the Canathon. When our city and surrounding community were devastated by a tornado, Ms. Thompson helped organize our school's communication system, which helped us reach out to tornado victims, and she helped us raise almost $1,000 in donations to help our families in need. She has been the recipient of multiple grants that have been used to benefit our school and helped raise over $5,000 for underprivileged students in Coweta County to attend Camp Invention, of which twice she has been named the director. Additionally, she was chosen as our school's Teacher of the Year after only her first year at Ruth Hill. Though she is considered a new teacher in the gifted world, she has already mentored several new gifted teachers in our district and has even presented at a state gifted conference. I have met few people in my career who have the energy, drive, and commitment shown by Ms. Thompson. She truly has a servant's heart and selflessly puts the needs of others before her own. It is truly a pleasure working alongside her each and every day. Introduce to you Ms. Mary Thompson.
Thank you, Dr. Corley. I believe we should know what our "what" is and our "why" is in life, and to go with diligence, perseverance, and determination to carry them out. I'd like to thank Dr. Shawanda Jackson, Dr. Corley, Mr. Mack, Ruth Hill Elementary staff and faculty, our parents, and community for supporting, believing, and allowing me to do what I was called to do. That is to aspire, inspire, and build leaders of tomorrow. Teaching is a passion and a mission ingrained in my heart. I am honored to represent Coweta County and Ruth Hill as this year's GAGC Gifted Teacher of the Year. As for my "why" I do what I do, I brought some here for you. Dr. Horton, Dr. Guy, Coweta County School Board, may I present Ruth Hill Elementary School's 3rd Grade Reach. Rise up.
Don't give up.
Don't give up.
Rise up.
Hustle hit.
Never quit.
Never quit.
Hustle hit.
What is REACH?
Leadership, Innovation, and Humor.
R-H-E-S.
Leadership, Innovation, and Humor.
Is to empower students through rigorous work, high expectations, and a safe environment. Believe, and you will achieve. I believe. I will achieve. One on three. May I introduce one of my 3rd grade students, London Williams. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and members of the board. I am London Williams on behalf of Ruth Hill Elementary School. We would like to thank you for helping us believe and achieve. We appreciate your service. As a token of our appreciation, we have made these for you. Thank you for supporting our growth.
How very kind. My son is getting married on Saturday, so this will be wonderful at my house as my guests are coming in this week.
I had the pleasure of visiting Ms. Thompson's class, I guess it was last week. And when Dr. Corley said "passion and energy," I think that was the understatement of the night. That was truly a classroom that was filled with passion and energy, and I actually got to take a picture of her with her plaque that she won for this Gifted Teacher of the Year, so thanks. I enjoyed it.
So hold on to this.
She's always in charge.
Our second recognition tonight is a recognition of two students from two schools, and it's a continuation of what we began actually last month. Last month, the board recognized a number of outstanding student musicians who were selected this year for All-State Band and Chorus. All-State Chorus was held February 17th through 19th in the Classic Center in Athens, and All-State Band took place just this last weekend, also in the Classic Center. Well, we have two more All-State Band students to recognize this month. These are from Blake Bass Middle School and Lee Middle School. I'm going to call everybody down, if you would, and we actually have their principals with us who are going to introduce any of their folks and their students who are here with us tonight. And we're going to start first with Cindy Bennett of Blake Bass Middle School.
Good evening. I appreciate everyone recognizing our student along with our guest. I would like to present to you Alexis King, who is part of the All-State Band for the State of Georgia. She is a current 7th grade student at Blake Bass Middle School. Along with Alexis, I have our band director, Mr. Oscar Prado, and her parents as well, Mr. and Mrs. King. I think they're up front. So we are so honored and very proud of Alexis and all of her accomplishments. She plays the bassoon, and so quite the instrument to be so very talented, and we can't wait to see what her future holds for her. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I would like to introduce Mr. Brett Daniels, 7th grade student, plays the percussion, straight A student at Lee Middle School, very gifted and talented. We're so proud of him, led by Mr. James Christensen. His parents are in the back as well, Mr. and Mrs. Daniels. But we're very proud of Brett. He's done a great job, and his future is very bright.
Mr. Jackson, I think we have one more. Our core business, but I'll do it. How about that? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's core business presentation will be from Noonan Crossing Elementary School. I'm going to call on Noonan Crossing Principal, Dr. Paige Charlton. Dr. Charlton.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to share tonight. I'm Paige Charlton, the principal at Noonan Crossing, and recognizing that the five-year strategic plan emphasizes a learning culture, we at Noonan Crossing have identified strengthening positive relationships-
Which twice she has been named the director. Additionally, she was chosen as our school's Teacher of the Year after only her first year at Ruth Hill. Though she is considered a new teacher in the gifted world, she has already mentored several new gifted teachers in our district and is even presented at a state gifted conference. I have met few people in my career who have the energy, drive, and commitment shown by Ms. Thompson. She truly has a servant's heart and selflessly puts the needs of others before her own. It is truly a pleasure working alongside her each and every day. Introduce to you Ms. Mary Thompson.
Thank you, Dr. Corley. I believe we should know what our "what" is and our "why" is in life and to go with diligence, perseverance, and determination to carry them out. I'd like to thank Dr. Shawanda Jackson, Dr. Corley, Mr. Mack, Ruth Hill Elementary staff and faculty, our parents, and community for supporting, believing, and allowing me to do what I was called to do. That is to aspire, inspire, and build leaders of tomorrow. Teaching is a passion and a mission ingrained in my heart. I am honored to represent Calheweta County and Ruth Hill as this year's GAGC Gifted Teacher of the Year. As for my "why," I do what I do. I brought some here for you. Dr. Horton, Dr. Guy, Calheweta County School Board, may I present Ruth Hill Elementary School's 3rd Grade Reach. Don't give up. Hustle hit. Never quit. R-H-E-S. Is to empower students through rigorous work, high expectations, and a safe environment. Believe, and you will achieve. I believe, I will achieve. One on three. May I introduce one of my 3rd grade students, London Williams. Please come to the podium.
Good evening Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and members of the Board. I am London Williams on behalf of Ruth Hill Elementary School. We would like to thank you for helping us believe and achieve. We appreciate your service. As a token of our appreciation, we have made these for you. Thank you for supporting our growth.
My son is getting married on Saturday, so this will be wonderful at my house as my guests are coming in this week.
I had the pleasure of visiting Ms. Thompson's class, I guess it was last week. And when Dr. Corley said, "Passion and energy," I think that was the understatement of the night. That was truly a classroom that was filled with passion and energy. And I actually got to take a picture of her with her plaque that she won for this Gifted Teacher of the Year, so thanks. I enjoyed it.
Our second recognition tonight is a recognition of two students from two schools. And it's a continuation of what we began actually last month. Last month, the Board recognized a number of outstanding student musicians who were selected this year for All-State Band and Chorus. All-State Chorus was held February 17th through 19th in the Classic Center in Athens, and All-State Band took place just this last weekend, also in the Classic Center. Well, we have two more All-State Band students to recognize this month. These are from Blake Bass Middle School and Lee Middle School. I'm going to call everybody down, if you would, and we actually have their principals with us who are going to introduce their, any of their folks and their students who are here with us tonight. And we're going to start first with Cindy Bennett of Blake Bass Middle School.
Good evening. I appreciate everyone recognizing our student along with our guest. I would like to present to you Alexis King, who is part of the All-State Band for the State of Georgia. She is a current 7th grade student at Blake Bass Middle School. Along with Alexis, I have our band director, Mr. Oscar Prado, and her parents as well, Mr. and Mrs. King. I think they're up front. So, we are so honored and very proud of Alexis and all of her accomplishments. She plays the bassoon, and so quite the instrument to be so very talented, and we can't wait to see what her future holds for her. Thank you.
And next we have Principal Mal Kim, Lee Middle School. Good afternoon. I would like to introduce Mr. Brett Daniels, 7th grade student, plays the percussion, straight A student at Lee Middle School, very gifted and talented. We're so proud of him, led by Mr. James Christensen. His parents are in the back as well, Mr. and Mrs. Daniels. But we're very proud of Brett. He's done a great job, and his future is very bright.
Mr. Jackson, I think we have one more, our core business, but I'll do it. How about that? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's core business presentation will be from Noonan Crossing Elementary School. I'm going to call on Noonan Crossing Principal, Dr. Paige Charlton. Dr. Charlton.
Good evening, and thank you so much for the opportunity to share tonight. I'm Paige Charlton, the principal at Noonan Crossing. And recognizing that the five-year strategic plan emphasizes a learning culture, we at Noonan Crossing have identified strengthening positive relationships and increasing student engagement as points of emphasis in our school improvement plan for 2122. As part of our focus in this area, we are connecting deeply with students and designing instruction that is cross-curricular and encourages student collaboration and creativity. Tonight, I have with me two amazing teachers, one of my ESOL teachers, Melissa Lipsy, and one of my 3rd grade teachers, Will Larky. And they have brought some amazing students with them to share how Noonan Crossing is soaring to success.
Good evening. I am Melissa Lipsy, one of the ESOL teachers at Noonan Crossing. We currently have 74 ESOL students with a variety of first languages spoken. You can see from the slide the various different languages that are spoken, Korean, Gujarati, Chinese, Spanish, Urdu, many different languages. My main role as an ESOL teacher is to help the students learn English as their second language by focusing on four areas: listening, speaking, reading, and writing in English, while using the grade level standards to guide my lessons and differentiating my instruction according to the student's English proficiency. The goal is to have students not only learn the social language of English, but the academic language of English. And we do this by collaborating with our grade level teachers and reinforcing what the students are learning in the classroom. So, tonight, we have some of our awesome 3rd graders, and they're going to share with you what they've been learning in their classrooms.
My name is Will Larky, and I teach 3rd grade at Noonan Crossing. And I got to say, go 3rd grade and go band. It's a great night. Recognizing the importance of students being able to read, write, research, collaborate, and use technology, in 3rd grade, we are focusing on integrating content across the curriculum. The main standard that we're going to provide for you tonight was the colonial life and colonial times. Students chose a career during the time period, read informational texts, then used technology or another format to share their research. Some made posters, while others used Google Slides to insert images and text into their projects. To help bring their projects to life, some students used props or even dressed up. Students also participated in a simulation where they were silversmiths and used materials to create real-life objects. Students used technology to load images of their items into a Google Slide and typed a caption to explain their object. Our goal was to actively engage students in their learning and connect the lesson to real life through understanding the similarities and differences of life in the past and life now. The first student that we would like to present to you tonight is Julie.
Hi, I'm Pretty Julie. Life was hard, the uncolonized time. There are no car, grocery store, no electricity, and definitely not cell phones or combos. So, in order to make good and service, the people have to make their own good and service. Our teacher gave us assignment to choose a job that colonists held in order to make good and service, and compare them to similar jobs today. Some of the jobs that we can choose from were shoemaker, capmaker, tailor, and candlemaker. Now, Bella is going to present her job that she chose with you.
Hello, I am Bella. I chose to learn about how a shoemaker helped provide a good and a service. Shoemakers made shoes from leather and animal hides, and also repaired shoes that were torn because in the winter their feet could get really cold if they had holes in them. I also learned that a variety of shoes we have today was not an option back then. They all look the same. Today, we have so many different kinds of shoes. We wear for, we wear them for certain activities or for the weather. So, peoples today have the job of making shoes, but because of technology and resources, we can make so many different kinds and make more of them.
Hi, I'm Jason. I met with the Larky class and learned how to be a silversmith. First, we're given materials to create something, and I just made rings. In colonial time, if a person wanted a ring, they had to go to the silversmiths and ask to make one. But it's not like today. Today, we just go to the store and buy them. My favorite part of being a silversmith is to make money by selling my rings.
Hello, I am Andrea. During colonial times, there was no electricity, so candle making was a much-needed job. Today, we don't use candles to be able to see when it's dark unless, of course, the weather affects the power lines, but we use them more for the great smell. Today, we want to give you a scented candle to remind you of how making and receiving goods and services have changed from the past to now, and to remind you that students are the light to the future.
I would like to just say, as a writer of American history, you have just given me pure joy. What an outstanding presentation that you did, Julie, as well. You were amazing. You all did so great. I love to see American history, and I love to see it come to life. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'd agree. Y'all did a great job, really did. And, you know, on a personal note, who in here has Mr. Larky as a teacher? So, you know, I had Mr. Larky as a teacher in 4th grade at Elm Street.
If you would want to stay after the meeting to tell us some Andrew stories, we will hang around.
Great job, guys. Thank you very much for being with us tonight. All right.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February 8th, 2022 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, Group 1, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First action item I have for you in Group 1 tonight is to approve a proposal from Atkinson Elementary for the purchase and installation of playground equipment funded by the Georgia Power Foundation. Atkinson Elementary School requests approval for the purchase of materials and installation for playground equipment for the school. The equipment will be purchased with funds covered through the Georgia Power Foundation grant. Labor for installation of the equipment will be provided by the Citizens of Georgia Power South Metro Group. The total project cost for materials is $10,000. Requirements of Board policy FEAE have been met. Madam Chair, recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve a proposal from Atkinson Elementary for the purchase and installation of playground equipment funded by the Georgia Power Foundation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next action item I have for you in Group 1 is to approve a contingency change request to repair the kitchen roof at North Gate High School. Approval is requested for a contingency change request to repair the roof on the kitchen at North Gate High School. Kitchen roof and roof deck on the original building at North Gate was badly deteriorated. During initial planning for renovations and modifications to the building, it was determined to handle these repairs as a contingency item due to the difficulty in quantifying the damage prior to demolition. The existing condition of the roof deck presented a potential safety hazard for maintenance and construction workers. Therefore, the repairs were made as soon as possible after identifying the extent of the damage. Architect has verified that the work meets project specifications, quantities appear correct, and the proposal cost is reasonable based on current market prices. Total change order proposal cost is $32,136. Change order proposal and supporting documentation is attached. Madam Chair, recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve a contingency change request to repair the kitchen roof at North Gate High School. The total change order proposal cost is $32,136. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Next action item I have for you in Group 1 is to approve a contingency change request to add and replace millwork, modify ROTC walls, modify special education kitchen and restroom areas at North Gate High School. Approval is requested for a contingency change request to modify spaces for new art, family and consumer science, ROTC, and special ed classrooms at North Gate High School. An allowance of $1,250,000 was included in the base bid amount for modification in the areas of the existing building that will be relocated to the new addition. This contingency change request covers the cost to add additional millwork and replace existing millwork in the art and family consumer science classrooms, modify walls in the ROTC classroom, and modify the kitchen and restroom area in the special education classroom. The architect has verified that the proposal meets project specifications, proposed quantities appear correct, and the proposal cost is reasonable based on current market prices. Total contingency change proposal cost is $217,927. The change order proposal and supporting documentation is attached. Madam Chair, recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve a contingency change request to add and replace millwork, modify ROTC walls, and modify special education kitchen and restroom areas at North Gate High School. Total contingency change proposal cost is $217,927. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I do have just a quick comment. Mr. Copeland and myself were actually out at North Gate on Friday, and Ms. Wilks took us through this area, specifically the special education kitchen. And that area, she pointed out that some of the special education students that use this area to learn some life skills such as cooking and laundry, et cetera, are in wheelchairs. And the area is, it's kind of broken up now. There are too many walls, and it was very tight. So, I just want to thank and applaud whoever kind of noticed the problem, if that's Mr. Cheek or Ms. Wilks, or the whole central staff, for bringing this to our attention because it definitely needs opening up and improving for those kids. Thanks.
And, you know, on that, you hit my first point, Buzz, or Mr. Glover, sorry, I'll go on my second one. It's good to see that we'll be able to, for the family in consumer science, of course, we'll be able to get them kind of what they need. But I'll say this, you know, Mr. Glover and I were out there to actually judge a grilled cheese contest, and they made do with what they had. We're doing it in Calheweta. We're figuring it out, and it was all very good. So, shout out to their ingenuity over at North Gate. It's always nice to go by and visit all our schools, especially in District 4.
Especially when they feed me. All right, any further discussion?
Just one comment. The, all of the improvements that we're making that are so vital, but we're also upgrading. But if I'm not mistaken, the buildings and all the repair work and upgrading that we're doing, the original structures are over 20 years old, are they not?
Yes, ma'am. North Gate High School was built in 96, Ronnie, is that right? So, occupied in 96.
So, it's 25, 26 years old, so not only is it time, but it's plenty of time and the appropriate time to upgrade.
I couldn't agree more, and I do, I do say, right on schedule. That's about, about that 25-year timeframe is when we begin to look at a full renovation, and that is where we are in the life cycle of North Gate. We'll mention, Mr. Glover, you mentioned the collaboration that occurs on a project like this. It is truly a team effort between the school-level people, teachers, administrators, maintenance people, maintenance staff at the school level, and of course, I would say Mr. Cheek and his team. Mr. Cheek is kind of a team of one, but he, he does a really good job of listening and making sure that, that at the end of the day, we're meeting student needs. And some of these adjustments that we have to bring you from time to time are a reflection of that work. So, thank you, Mr. Cheek.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
Last action item I have for you in Group 1 is to approve a request to purchase 1,680 cases of paper from Liberty Paper Company. Approval is requested to purchase 1,680 cases of paper from Liberty Paper at a cost of $38.65 per case. Total cost of the purchase is $64,932. Additional quotes were obtained from contract paper at a cost of $42.90 per case and My Georgia Office products at a cost of $49.98 per case. Staples originally quoted us at a cost of $29.48 per case, but subsequently canceled their quote due to problems fulfilling the order. This purchase falls under the provisions of Board Policy DJED for emergency purchases. You will recall last week, I notified you via email that I had gone ahead and approved this purchase so that we didn't interrupt instruction. Copy paper in school was a pretty big deal. So, went ahead and approved that, but wanted to bring it to you tonight. I will say, this is us feeling the effects of some market changes that are, that are beginning to occur. I can't recall, at least in my two years Superintendent, having to bring you a copy paper order. So, this is just, it's just an example of changing times and market conditions. And we're going to begin to feel that in a lot of areas. So, with that, Madam Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve a request to purchase 1,680 cases of paper from Liberty Paper Company at a cost of $38.65 per case. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Are we going to see any issues with actually getting the paper? Because I know we've had, you know, looking at the world right now, shipping is a concern.
What I will say is, we are feeling the effects of things that are going on both in the state, regionally, and around the world. Specifically about this one, I'm confident that we're going to be able to get it, but we don't count on it until it's actually in the warehouse across the street. It's just the nature of the world we're living in right now.
Thank you.
Dr. Horton, one quick question, and not for this month's meeting, but you've brought up a good point that, you know, in fact, we were talking about it before the meeting started, what we're seeing going on with gas and fuel. Maybe next month, at next month's meeting, we could get an update for our Transportation Department and what we're seeing with the cost of fuel to operate our buses and our equipment with the school system.
Yes, ma'am. I'll bring that to you next month.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. There are no items in Group 2, so we'll move on to trips. Action items, Group 3, Dr. Horton.
Call on Dr. Mark Guy to bring you trips. Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The Principal at Arnold Middle School requests permission for the band and the chorus to travel to Orlando, Florida on February 12th through the 15th, 2023, to participate and perform at the Universal Star Workshop. No school days will be missed, and there's no cost to the school system. This next trip request is basically for informational purposes. Due to the short notice, East Calheweta High School received confirming that the rifle team qualified to participate with policy IFCB. Dr. Horton had to move forward with approval, but the Principal at East Calheweta High School requested that the permission for the Junior Reserved Officer Training Corps rifle team participate in the United States All-Service JROTC Championships in Port Clinton, Ohio on March 17th through the 20th, 2022. And that's next week. Students will miss one day of school, but there is no cost to the school system.
Madam Chair, recommend approval of both trips.
Excuse me. You've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the field trip for Arnold Middle School for the band and chorus to Orlando, February 12th through 15th, 2023. twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Do we need to take a vote on the second one? That's just for informational. Okay.
Okay.
This time, I'll call on Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Mr. Keith Chapman, to bring you your budget report and your sales tax. Mr. Chapman?
Good evening. We continue to stay under budget through the month of February. We've completed sixty-six point six seven percent of the year. We've expended sixty-three point one two percent of our budget. Majority of our underage to this point relates to custodial staff. Through the majority of the year, these expenditures have been charged to ESRS funding. We recently placed those charges back into the general fund where they'll stay the remainder of the year. The other large component is related to instruction. We've, for years, budgeted aggressively with our instruction budget. We've historically stayed significantly under. These are the two largest items making up. Sales tax, we continue to see great numbers there, just over two point seven million dollars. Our increase year-over-year is fifteen point one five percent.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. This time, I'll call on Dr. Mark Guy again to bring you your staff and student attendance. Dr. Guy?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Before I share with you that student attendance report, I'd like to call your attention. We do have some new artwork here in the boardroom. That comes to us from East Coweta High School, from Ms. Newell's art class. The highest staff attendance for this last reporting period was Moreland Elementary School. Highest student attendance in the program area was Central Educational Center. Highest elementary student attendance was Brooks Elementary School. Highest middle school student attendance was Blake Bass Middle School. And the highest student attendance for high school, Northgate High School, home of the Vikings.
This time, I'm going to call on Mr. Mark Whitlock, CEO of Central Educational Center and Director of Public Policy, to bring you your board goal report. Tonight, he's going to talk to us about dual enrollment option B. Mr. Whitlock?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Dual enrollment graduation option B is a unique way, a unique part of Georgia policy that allows high school students to graduate from high school by graduating from technical college. They must be technical college graduates to receive their high school diploma in order to have nine high school courses plus credentials from the technical college. Those credentials can be two certificates, two technical certificates of credit, two collections of courses in a career pathway area. Those, those can be a technical college diploma or any associate degree. Coweta County was the pilot in the state for that. It was our school system and West Georgia Tech who worked with state leaders to implement dual enrollment graduation option B in twenty sixteen with our implementation of the first German-certified apprenticeship program ever in America that starts at age fifteen. That was the kickoff. We're now seeing more than forty school districts around the state begin to focus on dual enrollment graduation option B. Coweta students succeed in programs with West Georgia Tech, like welding, precision manufacturing, automotive technology, dental assisting. Many others are on the horizon because of the need for skilled talent in these areas. Dual enrollment graduation option B and programs like this form the foundation for upcoming expansion at CEC. Students graduating from these programs come from diverse backgrounds, but generally they enter these programs because they want a head start on a career and on a higher salary. There are many stories. Let me share with you a couple from students who've gone through this program. One involves a student who said he wanted an associate degree in financial growth before he left high school. When he began the program as a sophomore at age fifteen, he didn't envision that by age twenty, he would have received two promotions, would have bought his first house, and would be promoted in a position to work anywhere in the world with his company. In addition, he achieved that associate degree by the time he graduated from Northgate High School at age eighteen. Another student said this, "The program restored my faith in myself and my ability to earn a living with a trade for the rest of my life." He had four job offers when he graduated from East Coweta High School at age eighteen, and he accepted a great one. He recently led students from CEC on a tour of the company, now acting as his company's host for students who have similar aspirations. We're only able to utilize dual enrollment graduation option B because of a great team throughout our school system, West Georgia Tech, and the entire community. In particular, let me, let me call out high school counselors who are led by Dr. Dawn Revere, our career counselor at CEC. They do a tremendous job in helping parents and students understand this unique part of Georgia policy. West Georgia Technical College, their executive director of dual enrollment, Lauren Edgar and her team, work alongside our counselors to support students and parents. Business leaders in our community have provided internships, apprenticeships, that offer students the chance to practice what they learn and to try out opportunities for which a significant number of them have been hired. As one Coweta, as one Georgia school system seeking to copy Coweta County said it, and I'm paraphrasing, "In the twenty-first century, one size does not fit all. Graduating students with a traditional high school diploma is no longer enough. Georgia's dual enrollment graduation option B provides the nation's most comprehensive path that allows graduates from high school to enter and earn today's high-skill, high-wage jobs. I'm appreciative of your role, your support. Again, we were the pioneers in the Coweta County school system in starting this for the state of Georgia." Thank you, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mark. Last item I have for you is the facilities and construction report. I'll be brief. Of course, we've talked about the work going on at Northgate High School. If you go out to Northgate, that two-hundred north hallway, it is, it is a mess right now, but I promise by summertime, it'll look totally different. Or at least Ronnie promises by summertime, it's going to look totally different. The addition, it's coming right along. I would say that it, it is ahead of schedule for where we expect it to be right now. So we're, we're going to be good to occupy that by midsummer, to have it ready for school to start in the fall. Blake Bass Middle is still there. We're still working on some punch list and closeout documents. Same with those HVAC projects and lighting projects that we did last summer. We're still processing some final pay requests there. As a matter of fact, I think I received those this afternoon from the DOE. Reroofing at White Oak and Ruth Hill, we're just awaiting closeout documentation on those. Temporary canopies at the Cougar Village over at the CEC, project is substantially complete. The building inspector has now signed off on the work. So we are, we are much happier there on days like today, when it rains over at CEC. Noonan High School, the gym, we're still working on some fire alarm work there. And then there's going to be some alterations that we're going to need to make moving forward in the, in the current gym as we prepare for construction on the Noonan High Campus. We're going to need to add some egress in there over the coming months. As far as the Noonan High School project goes, Ronnie and his group have been very busy. They've held pre-construction meetings, check set meetings for bid package one, which is going to be demolition and utility relocation. We're hoping to bring a bid package to you for, or a GMP for bid package one to you in April for approval, and we'll be busy over the course of the next month pulling that together. Last item you'll see there is the Smoky Road Middle School Fire Alarm Replacement. Fire alarm system at Smoky Road is no longer supported, and we can't get parts to repair it. So we're going to need to replace the fire alarm there, and we're going to accept proposals on March the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So there'll be more information coming to you about that project over the course of the next, next couple of months. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. At this time, we set apart forty-five minutes for public comment, and I'd just like to read over the list of the, the points that everyone who's signed up has agreed to when you do come for your public comment portion. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. The Board of Education will listen to each presentation without comment. After each presentation is made, each board member may respond if he or she wishes to for a period of no more than one minute each. Only residents of Coweta or employees of the Coweta school system may speak at the public comment portion. No grievances will be heard concerning any specific personnel action or any specific county employee except through the grievance procedure set in the board policy. No one will be allowed to discuss any manner, any matter, excuse me, involving threatened or pending litigation with the Board of Education during the public comment portion of the meeting. In the need to preserve order, no person will be allowed to boo, hiss, clap, cheer, or otherwise show approval or disapproval for any speaker in any manner whatsoever. No signs or placards advocating any action or position will be allowed. No personal attacks on any person will be allowed. I, as chairman, am responsible for enforcing these rules. No citizen or system employee will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking on matters of public concern at the meeting. And any person not recognized within the allotted time for public comment will be rescheduled to speak at the next meeting. And as always, if you are interested in speaking, we have procedures for that, and you must sign up no, no less than three hours ahead of the meeting. So if you would like to go to the website, you can find further information about signing up to speak. And we will just, I'll call you, and if you'll come down, we'll have the timer set to five minutes. First, we have Russell Campbell.
Good evening. For a number of months in these school board meetings, we've seen some wild, unproven claims that smack of fear-mongering lies and ignorance. One woman claims without proof that there is a global campaign to sexualize our children that has arrived in Coweta County. She reads salacious bits of books without context, as if books haven't had similar material for thousands of years, including the collected writings we now call the Bible. She doesn't acknowledge that the internet, not the school library, is an easier and far more productive place to track down material that goes well beyond what she presents here. Another man has come here claiming to represent the churches of Coweta County without naming any, and with the highly doubtful implication that he represents all those churches. He claims prayer is needed in our schools, or we will open the door to bad things. Again, no proof is offered. And he proudly tells us of his link to Pre-Coweta, where you can find highly questionable theology, claiming that people can step into their, quote, "place of authority and make decrees that heaven will back up." Believe me, I have no doubt that he wants to be the authority with heaven as mere backup. What I see in these efforts is an age-old behavior by religious fundamentalists who wish to push their interpretations of scripture on the rest of us. They desire power and control, but above all else, what they desire is to play God. Their beliefs and interpretations of scripture are so spot-on, so righteous, and so insightful that no one should question them. They know the mind of God. They are His ordained instrument. God is not acting, it seems, but they will. They are His right hand, or so they believe. If you pay attention to history, you'll find all kinds of people who believe God was acting through them. In fact, you don't have to go far back to see it. I think we can all think about people who have acted in God's, trying to act for God in His steed. I'm going to skip this section. Thought it was maybe a little too tough on them, but anyway, it's dangerous. As a minister's, as a Methodist minister's son who believes in God, I'm not attacking the belief in God. I'm interested in all people recognizing how scriptures are misunderstood, misinterpreted, ignored, or simply bent to the imperfect and often destructive will of humans. But still, people keep at the power and control game. They want to play God. They want to announce what is right, and they want to force that on others. Many desire a theocracy, but there's never been a theocracy on this planet that didn't start perpetrating its own set of horrors. And by the way, it's not uncommon for book banning and burning to be one of the first steps on the path to those horrors. So how do we respond? I hope you respond by saying that the place for prayer is in the home, church, or silently in your own mind. After all, what religion is authorized to lead these prayers? Is it just the interpretations of the Christian Bible that these speakers I've mentioned subscribe to? Or can Jews, Muslims, Buddhists, Hindus, and Satanists take part? What about the branches of the Christian faith? Pentecostalists, Mormons, Quakers, Shakers, the Amish? What about them? What about the snake handlers? Keep prayer in the home and the church. Make school about learning. And I note that we can even study the Bible in school if we make it about a scholarly exploration, not proselytizing. Another thing we can do is let our kids read books about all kinds of things, including, and perhaps most importantly, things that are very different from their experiences. This promotes the acquisition of knowledge and the ability to understand and have empathy for those not exactly like them. So turn away from putting prayers in schools and taking books out of them, and reject those who claim to know the mind of God. We'll all be better off for it. Our beliefs and interpretations of scripture, no matter how strongly felt, may very well not stand the test of time, and anything that does not promote the practice of love, understanding, empathy, tolerance, and forgiveness is not to be respected. Leave the power to God. Humility is the job of humans. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ziamara Castro.
Good evening, Dr. Horton, Ms. Nixon, members of the board, and community members. Once again, I appreciate the opportunity to address you. Warning to all, I am not going to read a book today. This is not to say that the issue is not pressing or relevant. It still is, and very much so. And contrary to what some people believe, it does not bring me joy to read the obscene passages in some of the books that are in our school media centers. In fact, I wish I would never have to do it again. Nevertheless, this is not about me or any of you for that matter. It's about our children and doing what's right. Today, I would like to thank Dr. Horton and Dean Jackson for meeting with Jasmine Mihin and me, as well for the action taken by Dr. Horton. After bringing up six books that contain obscene passages and images to the attention of Dr. Horton and this board, he has started the reconsideration process at each of the schools that have the books in their media centers. While not permanently removed, and even though we can still see them in the system, Dr. Horton has stated and assured us that the books are not in circulation while they are being reviewed by the principals and media committees at each school. In addition, no left turn in education, Coweta will continue to bring up to Dr. Horton's attention other books that we, along with some members of the community that have volunteered to read these books with us, deem inappropriate to be in the school bookshelves. We are currently working on accurately gathering this information. As a response to one of last month's speakers, and current, that dare compare Bible verses to the book passages read before this board, I want to ensure you that books that are being brought up to your attention are with context in mind. I would also like to make a call to the community at large, regardless of what your political and religious beliefs are, regardless of race or your socioeconomic background, to join us in this mission that has nothing to do with any of the before-mentioned categories or beliefs, but much to do with our children's well-being. This is a concern that many of us can unite on. Remember that if these books, according to Georgia law, are not appropriate- Remember that if these books, according to Georgia law, are not appropriate for an adult to show outside of the school's media centers to a minor, regardless of the loophole in the law, they are not by any means acceptable or appropriate to expose children to them in our schools. Just because the law backs up for now this atrocity and crime, it does not mean that parents in the community at large should accept it. Dr. Horton and Coweta Board of Education members, I know you all know better, and I hope that you do indeed want the best for our children. The mission does not stop here, nor will we become complacent until we have a solution to this situation. We will continue to ensure that those that have been entrusted to oversee our education system in our county do what is in the children's best interest. And this is regardless if it is about the books they're being exposed to, the curriculum used, or any other radical ideology that has infiltrated many of our school systems throughout Georgia and our nation. It is time to put any differences and personal agendas aside. Again, this is not about me, nor it's about any of you. This is not about your feelings or mine, but it is all about our children's well-being. Some of you even agree that images brought before this board are garbage. Then let's get that garbage out of our schools. Thank you.
We have Jasmine Meehan next.
Hello, school board. Good evening, everyone. I also wanted to thank you, Dr. Horton, and Mr. Dean Jackson, for meeting with myself and Ms. Castro a few weeks ago. It was a pleasure getting to speak with you directly. I am very appreciative that we have a plan moving forward to review all the inappropriate book materials across the county and our schools. I have spoken with many parents that are very happy to hear something is being done. It is not my intention to come here every month and beat you all up, but I believe asking our elected board members for accountability is not out of bounds. Someone, somewhere along the line, has permitted the many obscene materials into our district, knowingly or not. Point being, we all now know that we have a problem, and we could only move forward from here. Looking to the future, I would like to know how we can prevent future obscene materials from entering the schools, not just in our media centers, but elsewhere. I know this is not an immediate fix, but we would like to feel confident that our children cannot access inappropriate materials while at school. My children have already had a few experiences with being able to access inappropriate materials on the Chromebooks that they were given. When I addressed this with our school directly, a blocker was placed on certain websites. I wondered why this was not done before giving the kids this freedom. That's one of the things I assumed was a prerequisite. Our kids have more access to inappropriate materials than I do on my work computer. To my next point, and I think this is relatable to many, we as parents, and I think people in general, assume that all is good. We assume that school is a place of learning and education of our basic academics. I never imagined that either of my children would be able to watch a music video on YouTube by a rapper Tekashi69, a song called "Guba." Warning, if you want to search for it, it is disgusting. It's nasty, and is foul in the first breath this guy takes. You don't really have to watch the video. You just watch the first picture of the video, you kind of get an idea of what's to come. I made it about 16 seconds in before I had to turn it off, and I had no idea how much of this nasty video my son saw because he was at school. At the time, he was six when he watched this video that a classmate had shared with him. We do not get free rein at home on the computer or TV for this reason. There's no real way to prevent viewing of certain things, so we just don't allow it willy-nilly without monitoring. There's no reason our children need to be exposed to all the disturbing things out there. I do not see the purpose for the computers in school if we're not virtual learning. They're distracting, they cost money, they're not fully protected, and ours at home has a cracked screen. I understand we live in a world of technology, and we must prepare our children for the future, but our very young and impressionable ones are just not ready. Unintended or not, exposure to adult things is confusing, and it distorts their ideas. I will say that parents are making a comeback. I see it all over the country, and I'm proud to be a part of that movement. Parents' voices should be heard. There are something, there are some people that think we should not have an opinion on what our children learn or have access to at school, and I find that mind-blowing. Many of these supporters do not even have school-aged children themselves. Well, I do, and mine are still very young, and they have a long way to go through the system. It's my job to make sure they're safe and cared for, and we accept nothing less than a proper education. The one positive thing that I got out of the last two years was a wake-up call that strange and unimaginable things were going on, and I was called to action. I may not be on our PTO or volunteer at every turn for every function. Two parents working 50 hours a week is extremely tough. Sadly, that's the world we live in today, where people are working themselves to death. Our school staff and teachers are doing it, too. They truly have one of the toughest jobs out there. What I am involved in is conversations with my kids every day after school, on what they learned, talk about their day, good and the bad, homework, getting it done before the due date, and making time for each and every teacher-parent conference to discuss our kids' progress and learning opportunities. To close, I ask each month for parents to get involved, and it's so simple. Start a dialogue with your kids. Start paying attention to the materials being learned or the books being checked out by the library. Learn to play Uno as a family, and definitely turn that off the TV. I have said it before, and I believe it still, our education system is not the same as it was when I was in school. This progressive installment into the lesson plans is a force like no other. It is real, and it is here. All we can do is take a breath, speak up always, and pray our local educators and leaders will not allow us further down that path. Thank you.
Next, we have Joshua Weida. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I skipped over. Maxwell Britton is actually next on my list. I'm sorry.
Superintendent, School Board. I would like to thank writer Ms. Leffwitch of the New Times Herald for setting the record straight in reference to the former superintendent Steve Barker's involvement in the removal of prayer from athletic events, but you completely missed the point. Barker may not have removed prayer from the athletic programs. However, he did what most Americans are sick and tired of. With the help of his apologetic attorney, he avoided the conflict and dodged a possible lawsuit. Removing a coach's God-given right to pray with athletic students is unacceptable, but it is not my focus. My focus is to instate the policy of prayer to open Coweta County School Board meetings. Not all Supreme Court cases were unanimous rulings. Engel versus Vitell in '62 was a case discussing the constitutionality of school-sponsored prayer. According to USCourts.gov, Justice Stewart argued in his dissent that the establishment clause was only meant to prohibit the establishment of state-sponsored church and not prohibit all types of government involvement with religion. He found that the non-denominational nature of prayer and the absentee provision removed constitutional challenges. You have to pay attention to things that people tell you to ignore. In the recent New Times Herald article, both writer Ms. Leffwitch mentions and Superintendent Horton has quoted saying in that article, "Federal law prohibits prayer." A recent American-loving president said the government must never stand between the people and God, and certainly, federal law should never prohibit God. Case law is law that is based on judicial decisions rather than law based on Constitution. There have been plenty of cases in court, but unless it can be shown to violate the Establishment Clause, and just to be clear, nobody is defining a government religion here, then it is an exercise of the Free Exercise Clause. Moreover, Engel versus Vitell prohibited school-led prayer in public schools. It did not discuss or direct anything about school board meetings. We currently open the State General Assembly, county commissions, city councils, SCOTUS, and the US Senate, and US Congress with voluntary prayer. In 1969, Reverend Kenneth Shaw opened the first Coweta County School Board meeting with a commemorative prayer, but the practice defaulted to an eventual moment of silence thereafter. Why is a school board's policy different than the aforementioned local government commissions, councils, and US courts? Do not continue to erode what is principled, and stop being culpable for perpetrating the moral decline of our future. Instead of parroting, "We follow the law," I would direct the school board to challenge case law for the future of America. When you were first elected, most of you had noble visions of helping your community thrive by enriching young people's lives, but like most elective representatives who commonly fell prey to the trap of being a lobbied politician, a yes-man, you are no exception and are selling what the Department of Education as a business sells. You're selling mask mandates, arbitrary COVID response standards, critical race theory indoctrination, sexualization of our children, and the denial of parental rights. All taxpayer-funded, even insensitively requiring senior citizens to continue to pay school taxes in spite of their civic duties being largely fulfilled. We need to thin the herd at the central office. And finally, in the name of accountability, it's time for a fully independent forensic audit going back at least 10 years. Guidance documents from the Federal Department of Education are suggestions that do not fit the values of Coweta County School System or our country. It's time to stand up to better leadership and accountable government. It's time to do the right thing, follow the mortal compass, stop replacing God with government, and instead seek guidance from God. I'm standing here today, representing thousands of Cowetans, to inform you that your actions have been weak and are unacceptable. I am demanding that these policies be changed immediately to reflect the preservation of our children's future. You have an opportunity to start by instating the policy of prayer to open our BOE meetings now. God bless our children, our parents, our teachers, and each one of you, and God bless America. Thank you.
Next, we have Joshua Weida.
My reading tonight is from the 64th Psalm. Hear my voice, O God, when I complain. Protect my life from fear of the enemy. Hide me from the conspiracy of the wicked, from the mob of evil-doers. They sharpen their tongue like a sword, and aim their bitter words like arrows, that they may shoot down blameless with from ambush. They shoot without warning and are not afraid. They will make, he will make them trip over their tongues, and all who see them will shake their heads. Everyone will stand in awe and declare God's deeds. They will recognize His works. The righteous will rejoice in the Lord and put their trust in Him, and all who are true of heart will glory. Amen.
Next, we have Alan Brady.
Well, good evening, everyone. I've got a nice five-minute solid and then some speech here, but I'm going to condense it down a little bit. I was really just responding here to some recent letters to the editor regarding some observations in the school board meetings recently, what I'm had to do with some scientific or non-scientific or disagreement about masks. And I guess my, I would boil that down to, let's not have any more forced masking of anyone, especially children. So when that gets brought out again, and it will, let's stand up to it. Second, there's a discussion about the need for additional law enforcement. I'm personally glad to see them here. And the fact that there were a number more than there used to be, well, I can remember when the room that you met in was about as big as this little space right here. So it seems logical to me that there should be more officers when there are 75 or 100 people attending these meetings, which I guess the rain has, and the kids have kind of moved out, but tonight. But what I really want to talk about is this, and I'll just read this part. Finally, the writer mentions teaching race history to schoolchildren, and how critical race theory isn't even taught below the college level, as well as questioning the removal of inappropriate material from school libraries and whether proper procedures were followed in requesting these removals. Well, believe what you want about racial and sexual discussions in schools, especially involving very young children, but these things are absolutely part of a deliberate plan to disorient and confuse immature minds and cause them to question their country and their fellow citizens, their faith, their moral teaching, and even the authority of their parents, and ultimately turn on these institutions in service to a revolution to destroy their foundations and replace our civilization. These ideas have their origins in philosophical writings nearly 200 years old, and whenever and wherever they have been implemented elsewhere in the world have resulted in massive suffering, death, and destruction. In recent years, these ideas have been modified and sharpened into specific practices and tactics to be used on schoolchildren in this country. It seems that in the case of sexually explicit materials in school libraries, our highly-paid, from what I can tell, media specialists are relying on bad information from expert sources recommending that these materials be included. These sources are very clearly part of the effort to destabilize and destroy. Thankfully, and perhaps providentially, in the last couple of years, observant parents and others have seen these practices in action and have become concerned enough to object. Sometimes, these things are disguised as well-meaning and are hard to see and understand, but in the case of highly-sexualized reading material in school libraries and curricula, it's pretty easy to find. That's what some of us have been pointing out lately. It is now time for those in authority, specifically those of you sitting in front of us tonight, to have the courage to do whatever it takes to reverse this destructive process through all means available to you, beginning with removing highly-sexualized reading material from our schools. Despite our differences on the subject of money and other things sometimes, some things are far, far more important. Thank you.
Next, we have Paul Schneider Jr.
Yeah, good evening. So it's a privilege to be able to speak with you again this month. I think the things that we're presenting to the school board are not fringe ideas, but rather mainstream, right? I personally have worked with most of the churches in Coweta County, probably your church, and know most of the pastors, and the idea of removing pornographic materials from our libraries is a good thing. It's a righteous thing. When I was in high school, I unknowingly got involved in a book that didn't look at all bad by the cover, and as I read in that book, I came to a point that was very sexually inappropriate. I was involved in the storyline and kept reading. And that, the verbal images, the suggested, or actions that have been taken by those in the book were something that I struggled with in my own mind for years. So the question is, why do we want books in our school libraries that a child that's not looking for porn, yeah, you can find porn if you want to look for it, but one that's not looking for it, they're reading along, they're into the storyline, they're enjoying the book, and they read it, and it causes problems? And that's what we're trying to address and take care of. Coweta County is a county rich in churches and Christians, and it's a wonderful place to live. As I've seen on a bumper sticker, right, I'm from the north, but I came as soon as I could. But anyway, we moved to Coweta County in 1999. Our kids went to East Coweta Middle School, East Coweta High School, and so we've enjoyed being a part of the county for many years, and enjoyed working together with churches for many years. And I believe I have the pulse of most of the pastors in the county, you know? We want Christian influence in our counties. And just appreciate your help in bringing that to pass. Thank you.
Are there any board comments?
Just, I would like to follow up. I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Horton and Nathan Lee. And Ms. Barnett, I'm assuming, because I had copied you on the email as well, in follow-up to a request that I had made last month to at least have some dialogue with one of the organizations that addresses whether or not you can open school board meetings with prayer, voluntary prayer. And the attorney and I have just been, he's been very, very busy. They're actually in the process of defending a number of cases right now involving our military, who have been denied religious exemptions of the vaccine mandates. But he did assure me today that within about 10 days, they will be through with this one case that he's litigating. And he'll be in touch and was very appreciative of an opportunity to have some dialogue with Mr. Lee and with you, Dr. Horton and Ms. Barnett, and let's, you know, kick this thing around. But that is still pending, and just wanted to give you that short update. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If you don't mind, I actually had prepared because, of course, last month, this matter was brought to me publicly, and I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged to everyone tonight the work that has gone on since last month's board meeting on this project. So what I'd like to do for a moment, I'm going to read some remarks that I prepared. Board members, the majority of this is from an email that I sent to you this morning, updating you on my work, Attorney Lee's work, over the course of the last month regarding opening Board of Education meetings with prayer. At the end of last month's board meeting, a question was asked regarding the possibility of opening our board meetings with spoken prayer as opposed to a moment of silence during which individuals can pray silently if they choose to do so. I stated that I would consult with the board attorney to research what the legalities are and what our options would be to legally open our meetings with spoken prayer. Want to provide you with an update on our progress to this point. Following steps have been taken. Number one, the day after the board meeting, I asked Attorney Lee to research the legal requirements that need to be met to open our meetings with spoken prayer as opposed to a moment of silence. Number two, I asked Attorney Lee to provide me with a plan to legally open our meetings with spoken prayer after conducting this research. He will do so once this process is completed. Number three, the staff and I have researched past Board of Education meeting agendas and minutes to look for any references to spoken prayer at the beginning of board meetings. We've looked at agendas and minutes that are available dating back to the 1940s. As the speaker mentioned earlier, one mention of prayer was found from the inaugural meeting of the combined Kaweeta County Board of Education meeting on March 4 of 1969. That was the inaugural meeting of the combined city and county school board. On February 24, Attorney Lee, Chairman Barnett, and I offered via email to meet with Ms. Mink and representatives from organizations that she mentioned that may be able to advise us on questions of policy or practice regarding spoken prayer at board meetings. As of today, and as she just alluded to, we haven't heard back from these organizations. Of course, she just informed me that hopefully we will within the next 10 days. My hope is to have this meeting as soon as possible. Wanted to make sure that I brought this information to you tonight, since I stated publicly that I would look into it. Feel that it's important for the public to know that I'm going to be responsive when issues are brought to me. Staff's going to be responsive when issues are brought to us. We're also going to work with the board attorney to ensure that whatever we do complies with the law. It's my obligation to make sure that we comply with the law. And I'll bring you a recommendation very shortly once I have finalized information. Thank you.
Ma'am, I do have one quick comment. I don't know if Dr. Whitlock is still here, if he's sitting around the corner, but he alluded back to his CEC comments and the Option B graduation that is available. And I just wanted to publicly thank Dr. Whitlock for all the work he's done at CEC. As he's alluded to in several speeches, you know, it is a model that a lot of the school systems in the state of Georgia are following. And he is quick to give credit to me and my fellow board members. But you sort of deserve a huge amount of that credit for leading that way before I was on the board. And just want to thank you for what you're doing there. And I don't know if you can answer back there, but do you have any idea of these? You read us about two success stories from the Option B. How many of those students, that they are kind of first graduation? I know a lot of times we use the term first graduation college graduates, but maybe first graduation skilled technical school graduates in their family. Do you have any idea?[1667.94]